It is six o'clock and we'll call this special town meeting to order and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance, please. A pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Carl Fortuna, I am first selectman. To my right is Scott DeGroot from the Board of Selectmen and Matthew Puglisi from the Board of Selectmen. Thank you all for coming out. Appreciate it, it's beautiful out, but thank you for coming out. And to this probably somewhat brief town meeting is my guess, but happy to discuss anything that needs to be discussed. So first order of business is the nominated moderator for the meeting, so I'll accept nominations.
I'll nominate Carl Fortuna.
Oh, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Savage. Further nominations? There are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. Alright, first item of business will be to have our town clerk, Sarah Becker, read the call of the special town meeting.
Notice is hereby given that a special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Old Sabre will be held at the Old Sabre Town Hall, 302 Main Street, Old Sabre, Connecticut on Tuesday, August 2, 2022 at 6:00 PM for the following purposes. One, based on the recommendation of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen to ratify the following uses of ARPA funds in the amount of $247,461.27, which were approved by the Board of Selectmen and have been advanced. A, information technology equipment to support hybrid meetings, $7,774.83. Installing a water main on Evans Lane, $57,278.55. Catherine Hepburn Cultural Arts Center revenue replacement, $100,000. Old Sabre Chamber of Commerce revenue replacement, $23,900. Old Sabre Historical Society, $23,000. Shoreline Soup Kitchen, $10,000. Old Sabre Garden Club, $7,000. And Economic Recovery Program through EDC, $18,507.89. Number two, based on the recommendation of the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen to appropriate $2,800 to the Lions Club for the purpose of replacing lost revenue, lost event revenue. Three, based on the recommendation of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen to appropriate $10,000 to the Estuary Council of Seniors for the purpose of contributing toward a social worker. Number four, based on the recommendation of the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen to appropriate $5,653 from the town's capital non-recurring account for the purposes of installing two electric vehicle charging stations in the parking area known as Main Street Connections Park. Additional funding will be assessed by Earthlight Solar and Energy Solutions through an ever-source grant in the amount of $23,301 to complete said project. Signed Carl Fortuna, First Selectmen, Scott DeGroot, Selectmen, Matthew Puglisi, Selectmen. Date at Old Sabre, Connecticut, this 26th day of July, 2022. Attest Sarah Becker, Town Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. So, the first item on the agenda, I'll accept a motion and a second, then we'll discuss. So, is there a motion to ratify the following uses of the American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of $247,461.27 for the items identified by the town clerk in the reading of the call? Is there a motion? Well, motion by Karina Julia, seconded by Trevor Nichols. So, thank you for that. So, we received, the town of Old Sabre has now received nearly $3 million in American Rescue Plan funds. Early on, when we received the first tranche last spring or last summer, I thought it was relatively important to get some money out the door. We had $3 million that was coming in and I thought, you know, a lot of nonprofits had really suffered through COVID and I was anxious to get some money out the door. So, one of the first things we did was stuff like this so that we could make our town hall even more hybrid accessible for meetings. Larry Hayden has been very instrumental in doing a lot of that. We can now have meetings upstairs and downstairs. And the money here, we started going hybrid earlier than when this money was appropriated. So this was really a reimbursement for funds that were spent to help town hall function during COVID. And without digressing too much, town hall business got done during COVID and done very effectively, as effectively as anywhere in Connecticut. I've talked to a lot of first selectmen at a lot of meetings, a lot of first selectmen and mayors. And Old Sabre kept our zoning meetings going, our planning meetings going, our finance meeting going, selectmen meetings going. And a lot of that had to do with the technology, the Zoom technology, and there were some there were some learning curves. The Board of Selectmen meeting was Zoom bombed, remember that term? But we've now gone to a different format where, and many of you have participated in that format, where you're now a panelist and you're automatically allowed to speak. And then other folks who are not panelists are invited to speak when they raise their hand. So that, and I've recommended that format to a few other folks because I think we were earlier adapters of that. So Evans Lane, there are folks over there who were in the WPTCA program who had to have their septics upgraded. There's a health code standard that you can't have a well. They're all on wells within 75 feet of a septic and the lots are smaller. They've been clamoring for water for a very long time on that Evans Lane. There's Connecticut Water all around it and it was not there. So, that has been going on for years prior to COVID. So when this money became available, one of the specific uses of COVID funds is water infrastructure. So it's actually in the Treasury Guidelines. So we were able to get that project done. The original allotment by Connecticut Water was for $77,000. They were able to get it done for $57,000. So we had some monies refunded to us after we appropriated the original amount. The Cape, which many of you know, is a huge economic driver for the town on Main Street. The Cape, if you look at their ticket sales, so in the last 12 months, they sold about 40,000 tickets. The 12 months before that, they really suffered. So to keep the Cape up and running, the executive director asked for some funds also to assist with their museum. How many of you have been in the new museum? I hope, I hope many of you. If you haven't been there, you should go, it's beautiful. One of the explicit functions of the ARPA funds is also to help with the tourism industry which suffered very much during COVID and that has brought in a lot of tourism. That museum on average is attracting 60 to 80 visitors a day. So it's been a huge draw and the way it's built has allowed larger crowds to come in. So they can get a bus in and people can go through, people can then now go onto our Main Street and perhaps eat dinner or spend other funds. And then the Historical Society and the Chamber came in with net revenue losses because they were unable to do the art show. The Chamber, the Historical Society was unable to do their, I think they do a big fall Taste of the Town. I think, I forget what exactly what it's called. So that was a net revenue replacement. The Garden Club, same thing, they couldn't have their annual garden sale on the town green. And the Economic Recovery Program through EDC was the Starlight Festival, which we did for the first time last year. We will do it again this year. It was launched last year. The COVID funds are very, again, specifically not for economic development, for economic recovery. So we thought having that Starlight Festival attracting people to town in the winter at the, what we were hoping for, more at the end of COVID, we've learned that not to be the case. But that festival was an idea that we came up with to help with tourism and to get people back into town. The one item I didn't mention, which I'm going to mention now, is the Shoreline Soup Kitchen. They had a request during COVID. They found that they could much better use a refrigerated food truck because they were getting so much demand that, and going to so many different places, but getting a lot of donations that they had a call out for a refrigerated food truck. So I, the executive director of the Shoreline Soup Kitchen kind of put that out to all the towns in the catchment area for the Shoreline Soup Kitchen, which are Old Sabre, Westbrook, Old Line, East Line, Chester, Madison, Clinton, Essex, Line, Deep River, and Killenworth. And Amy Hollis said, "We could really use this." And she sent it to everybody. And I saw that and I'm like, geez, you know, if all these towns put in $10,000 from their ARPA funds, they could do a great service and the great work that they do a lot easier. So I called up Amy and I said, "I'll spearhead that effort for you." So Old Sabre was an early adapter and I said, "We'll put in 10,000." So just so you know, since then, Old Sabre, Westbrook, Old Line, East Line, Chester, Madison, Clinton, and Essex have all followed and they've all donated $10,000. Line has approved it, but not dispersed it yet. And Killenworth, it's also approved, but it just needs to go to a town meeting. So they're going to get what they wanted out of that. Great use of the ARPA funds. So the Board of Selectmen early on approved all these expenditures. Normally, when we spend money in the town of Old Sabre, we go to the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Town Meeting. That's our form of government. The American Rescue Plan funds went to towns, boroughs, hamlets, counties, states. There are so many forms of government in our country, the Treasury Guidelines do not necessarily say how you should, what is the appropriation process in every form of government. So I do believe that the Board of Selectmen has the authority to release these funds. I have now come around and our auditors came in here and they were satisfied with that, our town auditors. I feel that it is probably a more transparent, for the rest of the money, we're talking about $2.6 million to go through the whole process. So I, we have a committee, an American Rescue Plan Committee chaired by Mr. Bruce Carlson right over there. Brad Thorpe is also on it. Brad Thorpe's on the Board of Finance, he's also on the committees. Susan Estey is on the committee. Who am I missing? Anybody else on that committee? So there's a committee of eight and they're going to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen on how to spend the rest of the ARPA money. That will come to the Board of Selectmen and I intend to follow the same path that I'm asking for ratification on these funds, go to the Board of Finance and then to town meeting. It may not all be done in one town meeting in the future. It may be several town meetings. But we thought, at the end of the day, I've come around and I've evolved in my thinking on these, how to best be transparent about how we're spending these funds. So I am asking at this point for ratification of what we've already spent. I called up Town Council and Mike Cronin and I said, "Mike, we've spent these dollars. Is going to town meeting to ratify that an appropriate step?" And he said, "I believe it is." So I come before the town meeting, the Board of Selectmen comes before the town meeting. On item number one, to ask for ratification of what has already gone out the door, which are the items that I've identified in number one here. So with that, I've been very long-winded about it. Are there any questions? I'm happy to answer any. Karina?
This question is related to the process that you just described for the remaining $2 million. Is there a time limit within which you must disburse those funds?
Yes, so the funds must be designated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. So we have time, I know. I don't, I don't believe it is the intent of the committee or the Board of Selectmen to be spending money in 2025 unless it's money that's been appropriated that can then be used by the entity that has it. Additionally, just as a follow-up to all this, we are going to be requiring each recipient to sign a document that says, "You gave us money, we're going to spend the money like in the way that we told you we were going to spend it and we agree to be audited over the use of the funds." There is a, there is in the Treasury Guidelines a whole section on how the Treasury can come back and grab the funds if they're used inappropriately, like in West Haven. Not to bring up West Haven, but I don't think, you know, West Haven is a bad example. Many of you probably have read it in the paper, West Haven misappropriated ARPA funds through a very sloppy process. That's not going to happen in the 168 other towns. I really believe that. Just bad actors. So we will be doing this with all the expenditure of additional funds. So happy to answer any questions. With regard to the committee that is discussing the future use of the funds, they meet at 5:00 on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Those meetings are hybrid. You may join from the comfort of your own home. So, and the committee would love to hear your input, by the way. I happen to know that. And they're doing, it's a lot of work. There, it is truly a lot of work. There's going to be a lot of demand on this money. As you probably know, we're advertising, we have an application out there. If people, if you know of other nonprofits or folks who may be eligible for these funds, if they want to apply, there is a form out there. So anyway, I want to stick to item one, ratification of the funds that have already been spent and the Board of Finance has now approved it and went back to the Board of Selectmen and now it's before a town meeting. Are there any further questions on item number one? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. Item number two and number three, and we'll take them individually, are recommendations that came out of the committee of eight that we've appointed. These were recommendations that were made about three, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, somewhere in there. They were, they're similar in nature to some of the other ones that have already been distributed, funds that have been distributed. So the committee thought it was appropriate to get these dollars out the door totaling $12,000. So the first one is to the Lions Club. So I'm going to accept a motion on item number two to appropriate $2,800 to the Lions Club for the purpose of replacing lost revenue, which is a very specific, in the Treasury Guidelines, a specific use of the ARPA funds, specifically designated for that. So it's an entirely appropriate use. So Karina makes a motion, Brad makes a second. Now I know there are members of the Lions Club here. I don't, so if there are specific questions, it can be addressed. Any, are there any questions on item number two? It's $2,800. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. Item number three, the Estuary Council of Seniors is looking to hire a social worker for some of their folks who they feel need a little bit more outreach, perhaps additional services. A lot of older folks didn't necessarily get out to see their doctors as much or didn't get out socially as much. So they're hiring someone, I think the total cost is about $90,000 as I recall Bruce. This is not a recurring ARPA cost. This is a one-time request to help fund this position. So we've been very clear on the ARPA committee that we are not looking to fund recurring costs or build new costs into the town budget or in the, you know, if a nonprofit wants to build additional costs into their budget, that is a choice they make. But this is a one-time appropriation, again, a number one, it goes to the Estuary Council of Seniors, which is a nonprofit. Number two, it goes for mental health purposes, which is also very much the focus of the COVID funds to help people recover from either isolation or get additional, make sure they're seeing their doctors. So any questions on the Estuary request? Bruce, is there anything I left out with that?
That's good.
Trevor?
So I understand you correctly, you're trying to hire one person?
We are not hiring. The Estuary Council of Seniors. The town is not hiring. They're requesting funding to help them hire someone. Yep.
I think I have a correlated question. So do you know if that position is only intended to be in place for a year or do they intend to?
I think they will intend it. I don't think it's just going to be for one year.
They're, they're expanding the hours and allowing then if it's that, that this is a necessary ongoing expense, they'll pick up the expense.
There you go.
Okay, going forward, yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Yes, I think, I mean, it's a needed thing.
Yep, thank you for the clarification.
And then, okay, that's.
Okay. Okay. Hearing no further comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Alright, thank you. Last item, not COVID-related. So this is, so I've had a lot of requests over the years for some charging stations in town. These are not the fast chargers, so you can't bring your Tesla here and get it charged quickly. These are going to be the trickle chargers that it would take probably eight hours, I think, to get a full charge, I'm guessing, on a normal charge.
But we'll talk about that during discussion.
So actually, why don't we have a motion and a second? That way we, a motion by Karina and Trevor seconded. So these are slow chargers. When we built the park right across the street from the Cape, Main Street, we call it Main Street Connections Park. Not the best name ever, but that's the name. And we actually built the infrastructure under there for charging stations because we thought we might need them at some point and we wanted to have the accessibility to that. So there are, there is enough infrastructure for four charging stations. We're going to do two right now because there's only 29 spots over there and I didn't want to take up four spots because that is a very popular parking lot for number one, K-Devence, and number two for Pickleball. And I don't want people to think that they can't park there if they have a gas-powered car. So I just created two spots at this point. There's a lot of incentives out there and there's probably going to be more in the future. I get solicited every day by these power companies who want to come in. So we're looking to do something in town hall, in the town hall parking lot. I think that makes a lot of sense. I know Big Y already has them, so they're becoming more ubiquitous. They're expensive. There is an ever-source grant for $23,000 that's out there. It requires about $5,5600 of town funds. We have something called a capital non-recurring fund. It's for capital projects that are not recurring every year. Simple as that. To spend money out of that capital non-recurring fund, we must go to, the Board of Selectmen has to go to the Board of Finance, request the Board of Finance, designate those funds for a project, and then it must go to a town meeting. So whether it's, whether it's $5 or whether it's $5,600 or whether it's $300,000, we have to come to town meeting to spend those funds through the capital non-recurring. So that's why we're here to request those funds. Are there questions on that item? Karina?
Yeah, I think this is right. I'm a big proponent in full transparency. I drive a whole vehicle, so I think it's, it's good. My question is that, as you alluded to, there are different levels of chargers.
Yep.
It's not just fast and slow. There's different levels of slow.
Okay.
And so do you know how, one question I have is, will it be free to the consumer? The other is, do you know how it compares to the charger at Big Y versus the trickle charger at Sabre Point In? Because there's, even though those are both slow chargers, there's a vast difference. And the reason I ask the question is there's a risk of somebody driving and parking
Yeah.
for extended period of time because there is too slow.
So at the Board of Finance, we had this discussion and the Board of Finance, I think, is inclined to request, and I'm not, I don't disagree, that the town at least break even on the electrical usage. I see this stuff as an amenity for people in town hall, right? But I agree with you. I think if it was free, people would just park there 24/7. So I think if it's, if the town is going to break even on this, I don't, and there's other, other folks have suggested the town should look for a five-year payback on this also. So that is yet to be decided. It's $5,600. I see it as more of an amenity rather than necessarily something we need to make money back on, but I'm open to the concept of trying to break even over the course of five years. These are the five-year warranty I guess.
Yeah, I work for Yale University. They were, their chargers within their network were free up until July 1st and now they charge $1.50 an hour. But their chargers do, they charge at a rate, I can't remember what the kilowatt per hour is, but it's a, I think it's probably close to 15 kilowatts an hour, 10 to 15.
So in, and to answer your second question, I'd have to look up.
Because like, so for example, the slow one at Sabre Point In,
I'm looking up the.
You get four miles an hour, which is really nothing and nobody ever uses that one because it's so slow. The one at Big Y, I think you can get eight miles an hour roughly, you know, and again, I haven't looked at it lately, but if there is an option, I would advocate for you to get
Okay.
more juice rather than less.
I am, it's a, it's a ChargePoint charger.
Good, that's good. That's good.
Thanks. It's a ChargePoint and I have the model, but even if I had the model.
It would mean everything to you, yeah. I have that app on my phone. So I think that's, I think that's probably a standard in the ChargePoint network. So I think that's good.
I can, I'm happy, I'll happily follow up tomorrow and get back to you. So the item could be tabled if you wanted it to be. And we could bring it to another town meeting if you wanted more information. I'd like to know. You know, I just think it's a, the town should be supplying some of this infrastructure over the course of the year. You know, I I just think it's a, the the town should be supplying some of this infrastructure over the course of the next few years. Any other questions?
About everything?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, so now that the estuary is getting these funds and the soup kitchens getting these funds. Are they allowed to reapply for the other amount of monies if they have other programs that they deem worthy or dropped it out?
No, no, you're not limited to one application.
And it's mostly for nonprofits and it's not for programs that weren't established before? Do they need new programs?
So it has to be impacted by COVID typically, okay? That that's the threshold issue. Were you impacted by COVID? So you can be a business, you can be a private enterprise, nonprofit, it can be an individual. Individuals are eligible too. So there's a lot of different uses for the funds, but it all ties into how. The person in the business, the nonprofit is impacted by COVID.
Do you have a lot of applications already?
I, how many? Do we know how many we have yet?
Right now, we have about four.
That's it?
But it's a, the application period is through September one. So I expect on August thirty-first, we're going to get over.
We'll get, we'll get a lot more. There's been a lot of inquiries. So there will be more questions. Erin, I'm happy to give you more information. No, no, I have tons of information. In fact, I'm happy to share the final Treasury poll with you. But there's a lot.
I'll take your word for it.
No, but, no, no, I have a lot, but what I'm saying is I have a lot of really good information. So I have handbooks on it that are ten pages long. So you might be interested to read that because it tries to, you know, make it a lot more concise than the Treasury guideline, which is one hundred and fifty pages long.
I think it sounds great and it sounds like support the soup kitchen, estuary, social workers to help people. I think it all sounds wonderful. So I'd love to hear more of that.
Just to give you a sense, like, social services is going to be putting in for a fair bit. So. You know, I I think there's going to be, going to be a significant investment in mental health services.
That's good.
Yeah. Mr. Saturday?
Education. I presume some of this money will all be refunded educational system. The kids got hurt by this COVID.
I think we got our own ARPA funds as well. And so, yeah, I'm on Board of Ed.
So the Board of Ed did did receive, I want to say nearly a million dollars. I know. So think about, think about it, just just the town of Old Sabre. Think about the funding that just we've received. And multiply that by counties and cities and states. It's just a staggering amount of money. Well, it's out there. And so. But the schools, I believe, are using it on each, uh, new air conditioning systems.
We're, yeah, we're funding some to the air condition, um, schools, Goodwin especially. That's the first one, but it's only a portion of the air conditioning projects. We have to get the rest, raise the rest of the money. But we've used it for, so. It's not really a social order, but a teacher, a temporary position of a teacher who's focused specifically on. Social emotional health for the children. So we haven't done anything like. Create new positions that we will then have to fund. We're, we're, we're funding temporary positions to get us through, you know, the near term. So I'm sorry to take away from you.
All right. Any further questions on item number four? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you very much. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second, thank you all for coming out. I appreciate it. Have a great rest of the summer. Thank you.